Call to order and roll call.
Chair Goss.
Present. Vice Chair Swab.
Present.
Commissioner Sixta.
Here.
Commissioner Noble.
Here.
Commissioner McCoy.
Here.
Commissioner Sarkisian.
Present.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the City of Kingman meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is Wednesday, February 12th of 2025. The first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. We have a few of them that we need to approve. The first one is the regular meeting minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission for November 13th of 2024. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of November 13th.
2024.
My second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Alright, the next we have regular meeting minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission for November 27th, 2024.
Chair, I just have one change. I was at the meeting and I'm listed as being excused.
Oh, I will fix that.
Great, thank you. With that change then, do we have a motion?
Making a motion to approve with that change.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, last we have the regular meeting minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission for January 8th, 2025.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on January 8th, 2025.
My second.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Alright, next we have consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the commission should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The commission may not respond to speakers during the call to public. The commission may direct the staff to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Do we have any?
We do not have any public comments.
Great, thank you. Alright, next we move on to our new business. The first item of new business is a public hearing for RZ 25-0001. This is the Bank Street and Coronado rezone. This is a request from the Development Series Department to rezone 1.93 acres of a 3.02 acre parcel from rural residential RR to commercial community business C2. Located at the northwest corner of North Bank Street and Coronado Avenue. Mojave County Assessors Parcel Number APN 320-04-014D. Staff recommends approval. And I turn it over to you, Jason. Take your time.
Commissioner Goss, Chair, good evening. For you tonight is the Bank Street rezone. This is a supplemental parcel that was not included in the rezone that came before this body back in January. This is rezoned case number RZ 25-0001. This particular rezone will actually affect a parcel that's 3.02 acres in area. This is located on the northwest corner of Bank Street and Coronado Avenue. The current zoning on the property is rural residential. The proposal is to change a portion of that project site, which is just the portion that fronts Bank Street, does side onto Coronado Avenue. However, it does not have any frontage on to Arizona Street. With that being the case, 1.15 acres would retain the RR designation under the Rural Residential Zoning District. And that would be fronting onto Arizona Street. And then the 1.93 acres would be rezoned from RR to C2. Little bit of history, just going back, back in January, this body actually heard the Bank Street rezone that dealt with several other parcels along Bank Street, both on the east and west side. This parcel was actually omitted from that particular rezone that evening as we were actually preparing a legal description for it to address only the portion that fronted on the Bank Street. As you can see, based on this exhibit here, the parcels in general still outline the commercial corridor area. They range in having zoning districts anywhere from C2 to C3. Like previously, the underlying general plan does have this particular property designated as regional commercial. So the proposed rezones tonight would actually bring the property into compliance and be consistent with our city's general plan. It meets all the requirements and the findings that are contained in your staff report. It is consistent with the general plan as discussed. And just that, it allows for a commercial corridor to be completed with along the Bank Street commercial area. It does not propose to harm or downgrade any of the other properties in the area. The site itself is also of a suitable size for commercial development. There are no outstanding comments from any agencies or departments. This was publicly noticed. Originally, we did have a neighborhood meeting that addressed all the parcels along Bank Street back in October of 2024. We mailed notices January 21st to all property owners within 300 feet. We posted the site on January 22nd of this year, as well as published it in the Kingman Daily Miner. Staff did receive one email that was included in your planning commission packets. That particular email did oppose any type of rezoning along Arizona Street. Staff has reached out to the entity or the lady that submitted the request and responded that we were not changing any properties along Arizona Street. Staffs have received no other correspondence. With that, based on the findings contained in your staff report, staff does recommend approval of RZ 25-0001 to the mayor and to the city council. I'm available for any questions.
Thanks, Jason. Does anyone have any questions for staff?
Good question. So this is city initiated, not by the property owner?
That is correct. This is city initiated change.
Any further questions? No? I see none. Thank you so much, Jason. Alright, I am going to open this up to public hearing for any comments that you guys might have. No? Alright, I'm going to close public hearing then and just open it up for commission discussion.
Make the motion to approve.
Great.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote?
Yes. Chair Goss, approve. Vice Chair Swab, approve. Commissioner Sixta.
Approve.
Commissioner Noble.
Approve.
Commissioner McCoy.
Approve.
Commissioner Sarkisian.
Approve.
And Commissioner Waters.
Approve.
It's been approved.
Great, thank you. Alright, next we just have a couple of reports. The first one is the 2025 First Quarter Developer Workshop. This was a report by the Development Series Director for the Developer Workshop held on January 29th of 2025. Do we have a presentation?
Thank you, Chair. No presentation this evening, Commissioner. Just want to give you an update. We did have our second quarterly workshop. So the first one being back in October of 2024, shortly after I got here. We did have our second one on January 29th. It was attended by about five different entities from the development community. Several council members, couple of planning commissioners. It was a great discussion. We were able to share, again, some of the things that are forthcoming, as well as some of the things that we've completed, such as a recent update to the zoning code, and then really looking forward to 2025, where we do have our site set on continued updates to the zoning code, as well as the city's subdivision ordinance. We shared a little bit about the city's drainage master plan or drainage manual being updated as well. And then we had dialogue with the various members of the development community, as well as shared the improvements still coming forth on our permitting system. So I just wanted to provide that feedback to the entire commission, that that's what we received that evening. And then we are targeting, our next one will be probably towards the end of April, first part of May.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions on that or want to share anything from being there?
I will. I would say that I attended this meeting hugely encouraged by the conversation, the way everybody is speaking to each other and trying to resolve issues between each other by talking it out. It was really encouraging. Staff did a great job. Jason was awesome in it, and I loved it. So I'm really encouraged that it happened.
Great, thank you. Alright, anybody else? No? Alright, then we're just going to move on to the second report, and that is the Traffic Impact Analysis Presentation. Presentation on Traffic Impact Analysis, Roadway Analysis and School Zones. Do we have a presentation on that? Okay.
Good evening, Chairperson Goss, Vice Chair Swab, Commissioners. I am currently the interim city engineer for the City of Kingman. My name is Mike Garman. I've been the interim city engineer now for a little over a year. Been at the city for maybe 18 months now, so I'm still kind of learning some things and drinking from a fire hose still, trying to figure things out. But Jason indicated to me that you guys, some people had questions about how traffic impact analysis were done, what the requirements were, so I prepared a really short presentation here. I'm going to try to keep it at a high level because it's, if we got down to weeds, we could be here for a few hours. But this should only take about 10 minutes. So to start with, what's required for TIA is spelled out in our street regulations. There's a table in there, Table 3, that has three levels of, or three categories of traffic impact analysis, an increasing level of detail and planning horizon. Notice, I've kind of outlined there in red, the lowest category is category 1, and it's based on, it's based on the engineer indicating that there will be 200 or more new peak hour trips. So the implication there is if it's anything less than 200 peak hour trips, we don't require traffic impact analysis. The information used to make that determination comes out of the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. I've got a slide here to talk about that a little bit. The Trip Generation Manual has a lot of graphs and equations in it that are based on detailed traffic impact analysis that are entered into, the results are entered into a database, and it gets, it's been updated annually since 1980. What it does is it'll give you a number of new trip ends. And so just to give you an idea of what a trip end is, got there at the top, you go from your house to Walmart. When you leave, that's one trip end. When you leave Walmart, that's the other trip end. So it's one trip has two trip ends. Let's go through an example that'll probably make it a little easier to understand. So for example, if someone's going to develop a new single-family residential subdivision with 96 dwelling units, you've got three graphs that you can look at for single-family detached housing in the Trip Generation Manual. The one on the left will give you the total number of trip ends. So for 96 dwelling units, the total number is 972 trip ends. And it says 50% of those are leaving the subdivision and 50% are returning. So that's how that's distributed. Then there's, what we make the determination on is the number of peak hour trip ends. New peak hour trip ends is what determines whether or not you got to do a TIA. So we also look at the AM peak hour, and so you can see here in the middle graph, that the total AM peak hour new trip ends will be 75.4. And then the PM peak hour total new trip ends will be 100. So since that's less than 200, we would conclude that the developer does not need to do a detailed traffic impact analysis. Conversely, we can look at a subdivision like this one that has 232 new dwelling units. Total number of new trip ends will be 2,189. The peak hour for the morning is 172 new trip ends, and the peak hour for the evening is 227 new trip ends. So 227 is greater than 200, so we would require a TIA for this developer, this development. So in terms of what they do for traffic impact analysis, all that is spelled out in the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. This is a document published by the federal government, by the Federal Highway Administration. The purpose is to standardize when and how traffic control devices are used, thus enabling standard enforcement. So what warrants a new stop sign or a new traffic signal in downtown New York? It's the same here in the City of Kingman. That way, they all get, they're warranted the same way, so they're enforced the same way. That's the whole point of making everything standard. Compliance is mandatory. These aren't guidelines. This is what we have to, this is how we have to do warrants for traffic, traffic devices. For a traffic signal warrant, there are nine possible warrants. I've bolded the ones that are most often looked at or most often warranted. There's vehicular volume, pedestrian volume and crash experience. The other ones, peak hour is like if you have a whole lot of traffic all coming out in a real short amount of time. If you think about the industrial park about 3 o'clock in the afternoon, that's a, that's a peak hour situation. School crossing traffic warrant is a traffic warrant at a designated school crossing. So it has to be a designated school crossing in order to use that warrant. Coordinated Signal System, this is something you see in downtown Phoenix, where you've got several blocks in a row with the traffic signals kind of queuing cars at a certain pace. A roadway network traffic signal warrant is where you have signals that are trying to direct traffic to a major interchange or something like that. And then traffic signal at a grade crossing, the most common situation for that is railroad tracks. So there's a, there are a lot of numbers and lines on this slide. This is the traffic signal warrant for vehicular volume. There's eight-hour vehicular volume and four-hour vehicular volume. And so what they do is they'll do, for a new subdivision, they'll do traffic counts, and they'll do a forecast. And it's like five years for most of them, but if it's a larger subdivision, they'll go out further. What you really have to pay attention to are the, in Table 4C, there's the, there's the 100% numbers. Those are the ones you actually look at. So Condition A is a condition where the major street counts exceed those numbers that are on there for vehicles per hour. And then on the minor street, those numbers are exceeded for vehicles per hour. And it depends on how many lanes and that kind of thing. That's in the left-hand column. For Condition B, if Condition A is not met, and it's a situation where the main road, the main street traffic really prohibits the minor street traffic from functioning properly, you can look at Condition B and basically use the numbers in that table. And then on a four-hour vehicular volume, you basically, it's the same thing, just on a shorter timeframe. And they've got a graph that basically does the same thing for four-hour vehicular volumes. And it's, those numbers are in vehicles per hour, so that's kind of to give you an idea of what kind of volume we're talking about to warrant a traffic signal based on volume. There's also pedestrian volume. It works very much the same way as the vehicular volume. They'll do, they'll do a count of existing situation, how many pedestrians you're getting at a particular intersection, and then they'll make a forecast. And then basically, you have a four-hour volume and a peak hour volume. And if you, if the numbers you come up with plot above those lines in the graph, then the traffic signal is warranted. If not, then it's not warranted. You can see the threshold on the pedestrian four-hour volume is about 100 pedestrians in an hour. And then on the peak hour volume, it's 133 per hour. So it's, that's a lot of pedestrians in a one-hour timeframe. That's when you would warrant a traffic signal for pedestrian volume. There's crash experience. There's two tables here. There's a one-year period and a three-year period. They look at two different thresholds. There's a threshold, a number of accidents in a one-year period that, angle and pedestrian accidents that have, no matter what the severity is, they get counted. And that's the first two, the four legs and three legs column in that table. And then you can see over to the right, those are fatal and injury crashes, and you can see the threshold is lower for those. And you have a similar table for a three-hour period. So if you meet those thresholds, then you can warrant a traffic signal based on crash experience. Finally, I want to point out the MUTCD also spells out the requirements for school, traffic control in school areas. Basically, what it says is that you're supposed to have a school route plan that's prepared by the school, the law enforcement, traffic officials responsible for pedestrian safety. It's got a map. It shows, you know, this particular map shows where the school is, marked crosswalks, crossing guards, stop and yield sign approaches. It shows where the pedestrian route is and where there's a signalized intersection. That's the kind of information that you would show on this map. And as I previously mentioned, if you want to do a traffic signal at a school, as a designated school crossing, you would use that school, school traffic, school crossing traffic signal warrant that I mentioned earlier. So that's pretty much it. I tried to keep it as high level as possible. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Thank you. We appreciate your presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. Yeah, thanks for the presentation. We do get, we do get asked to consider traffic a lot when they're putting in subdivisions or whatnot. Regarding the Cat 1, Cat 2, the subdivision doesn't exist yet, so you're using like a table based on what you know about the subdivisions to come up with the, like the figure they should, right?
The developer is going to forecast how many dwelling units he's going to, like on a plat, they've got to show all that. So you'll know how many dwelling units are going to be in the subdivision, and then they just use that number of dwelling units and look up those graphs and tables and come up with the number.
So the 96 you had in there, whatever. What about the subdivisions that are kind of phased out? Or maybe even separate small subdivisions that are owned by even the same builder, but just phased in one after another after each other? Does that have any sort of like compounding effect on traffic that we should consider? That maybe it's like a cheat?
Well, if they, the ones that are, where they stopped and then they restart, if it's an approved subdivision with an approved plat and improved improvement plans, and everything's already been approved, then that, that decision would have been made whenever it was approved the first time. Now, if they only built part of it and then they want to add on to the rest of it, then, and it's not an approved subdivision, it's just a new part of it that they're starting, then we would require them to show us how many dwelling units they're going to come up with.
Irrespective of the phases or whatever, you got to look, you look at it in totality, basically.
Yeah, we would look at it totally.
Okay. What I'm concerned about is, we had another member here recently left, and he was concerned about the width of the roads. You know, and it seems like if you're going to restrict, if you're going to increase the width of the roads to handle more traffic, that would probably need to be done upfront when you're considering the total number of the dwelling units in a subdivision rather than like piece we would get together.
Right. Well, our, our street regs basically say what the road widths are supposed to be for different kinds of streets. There's local streets and collector streets and arterial streets, and all those street widths are spelled out in our street regs. The traffic impact analysis, well, if they do a TIA, then that could, that could affect the street widths. If they, if they don't do one because they're under the threshold, then they would probably just use the standard street width. We also have a traffic master plan that identifies where our arterial and collector and local streets are at. And whenever we get a new subdivision that comes in, we will usually bring that map along. We first start talking to the developer and say, hey, here's where we've designated. Collector streets are supposed to be wider, or arterial streets are supposed to be wider. And we usually try to get them to play ball in that.
Well, to use the analogy, I mean, the capillary is where you want to fix the problem before you have to back up and start addressing it at arterials or things like that. It sounds like regardless, you're going to catch it there. It's more of an estimation process when you're trying to catch the capillary.
Right.
Sort of contribution.
I would say if, you know, we don't have a lot of, how do I go back? There we go. We don't have a lot of discretion in terms of what's written in the MUTCD or in the IT manual as to, I mean, those are all spelled out, pretty black and white terms. If we were going to make any changes, probably this Table 3 would be the thing you might want to focus on. I'm not real sure how we developed that threshold of 200, 200 new peak hour trips. I spoke with a previous city engineer. He wasn't real sure either. Some communities have a lower threshold, so that might be something that we could consider if we felt like maybe some subdivisions were generating more traffic and getting underneath the radar because they didn't have to do a TIA and that kind of thing. I mean, that's, that's something we could consider. But once, once you're, once you're into the analysis, it's all based on federal guidelines, so you're pretty much stuck with whatever the feds say you do.
Perhaps a sign that there's a problem is the city passing ordinance is to keep RVs off the streets. You know, the streets, ergo, the streets are so tight that they're already having enough trouble at the city level that we're taking other options rather than just widening the roads to begin with or something. Alright, well, it's been helpful. One other thing though, and this kind of ties in with Bank Street. We talked about just the fact that there's a school on that road, and you know, which is hopefully pointed out, it's in the county. But if you remember, on 68, we used to have the school right on the road. And I know everybody that's ever driven down that road's gotten a ticket when that, that school was right on the road. And what the, it is, they just blocked off that road and made you come, come to the school through like a side road, you know, which kind of makes a lot of sense. And there was a little concern in the last meeting, I think it was the last meeting, on the journey mega church becoming maybe a school. on the Journey Megachurch becoming maybe a school or having school services there and maybe introducing a, you know, a crossing there. And then we've got two 25 mile an hour zones on what's supposed to be our alternative to Willow across town. So I don't know if you have any thoughts on that or if some of your presentation material addresses that.
Yeah, you know, I was talking to Jack Plonie, who is our Assistant Public Works Director and Street Supervisor, about the school traffic situation and what we normally do. Because, again, I'm kind of new, and so I'm not real sure what we've done in the past. But Jack might be able to answer some of your questions.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
I could just repeat what I just said. Basically, just I'm concerned about the schools, potentially one or more schools on Bank Street. And just, we briefly went over what the code is or the guidelines for schools. Is there some way to maybe encourage people to use side streets, much like they did on 68, to prevent that traffic from being slowed down to a crawl, basically, you know, when it's cross-town traffic?
Yeah, so.
The city's aware of that.
Yeah, the, we've actually been working with KUSD. We've done some with KOL in the past. The school crossing, school zones and the crosswalks are detailed also by ADOT. Not ADOT specifically, but there's a supplemental volume to the MUTCD which details some state-specific requirements. School zones are part of that. Not all school zones should be down to 15. The high school is actually one of those, typically high schools. They may not drop those speed limits quite as far. So we've been working with KUSD. Some of that, the high school on Bank Street is actually a good example. A lot of the state sections are reserved for schools and, you know, maybe some future development, but a lot of times you see schools on those. All the ones that are on Bank, Gordon, the one you're referring to on 68, were all built on state sections. And typically, in the past, along section lines, that's where you would see your arterial or collector connections. So it's very typical that you're going to find a school zone that's going to be on one of those higher-capacity roadways.
Got it.
So.
Well, we've had some discussion about the investments in Bank, and then Bank just sits there, not really doing anything year after year. And that may be one of the reasons. I mean, people just don't use it to get across town when they have a roadblock effectively down the road. So just any guidance you guys could give to the people developing these schools would help, I guess. Thanks for the information.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Does anyone have any more questions? No? All right, thank you guys so much for coming and giving us the presentation. All right, next we just have announcements by commission members. This is limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. Do we have any? Nope, it doesn't look like it. Okay. Do we have any requests for future agenda items or updates? No? All right, then we are adjourned.